First Tuolaton City Council of the new year. And welcome to our new two city councillors, councillor Hillier and councillor Sacco, welcome. They just went through their very first work session. And now they'll get to experience a city council meeting. Uh, we're all looking forward to working with them in the next two years. And uh, bringing the city forward and making this a bigger, better city, uh, hopefully easily to drive through one day. Uh, right now it's pretty nice, but we know that won't last forever. All right. So first thing uh, I'd like to do is I turn over the floor to councillor Brooks for the moment of silence. For those who've lost their lives to COVID-19. And in work session, we mentioned that we're gonna also augment that. Uh, with in part, as part of that moment of silence to remember the two Capitol Police Officers. Who uh, have passed away since the uh, insurrection on Wednesday. Those being Officer Brian Sickwick and Officer Howard Levinggood. So I turn it over to councillor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor Bubinik. I um. I appreciate the opportunity that we as a council take. Before we go into problem solving to be mindful of people's grief. This week or this at this moment, seventeen thousand five hundred and six cases. Of COVID have happened in Washington County with a hundred and fifty-five deaths. Eleven thousand eighty-two cases in Clackamas County with a hundred and nineteen deaths. We reached a terrible time of over four thousand deaths in one day in our country. And we have been on a rise nationally at eleven percent. That being sa- said, um, right now Oregon's at a zero percent growth rate. And so I just also wanna um, be mindful and grateful to people that are being careful and safe. And like you mentioned, Doc, um, officers Brian Sicknick and Howard um, Levinggood. Lost their lives in light of line of duty, line of duty casualties. Um, and on the bright note, our state has vaccinated. Last time we were at council, they had just had the new vaccines or seven hundred to our um, legacy hospital here in town. And we have vaccinated nearly one hundred thousand people in our state, which is two point two percent of our population. And with that, I just wanna say, um, take a moment to of silence to remember those that we've lost. And those that are suffering due to the pandemic and the insurrection at our United States Capitol. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you councillor Brooks. Uh, we're slipping something in here before announcements. Uh, during work session, I asked to have a slight adjustment of the agenda for tonight made and council agreed. Where we're going to have our two new councillors introduce themselves. And our returning councillor reintroduce herself. So with that, I'm gonna go by uh, position number. So the first position number, yeah, lowest position number is Kristen Sacco. Welcome to the Tuolaton City Council. The floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, my name is Kristen Sacco and I am a native Oregonian. I have lived in Tuolaton since two thousand and eight. And I live here with my husband, my son, my two dogs and cat. Uh, my son is a senior at Tuolaton High School. Over the past few years, I have served on the Tuolaton Parks Advisory Committee. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan Advisory Committee and the Tuolaton Veterans Memorial Stakeholder Advisory Committee. So um, I have got my feet wet in the Tuolaton um, realm of government and um. I ran for city council because during my time on T-Park. I was really able to see how people can make a meaningful difference in our community. And that sparked something in me and I wanted to do more for our community. Um, I've always had a passion for public service. I volunteered at the elementary school, middle school, high school. I've done other volunteerism um, through different events. And um, so my passion is really with serving people, serving the environment, serving my community. My top priorities um, for city council, um, as I see them today. Are equity and inclusion, affordable housing, transportation and parks. Um, I'm a director at a locally owned but internationally operated um, company. So I really hope to bring my business experience into city council as well, along with my passion for the community. I'm so grateful for this opportunity. And so thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to serve the city of Tuolaton.
Welcome. All right. Next up, we have councillor Hillier.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I am Cindy Hillier. I am um, a native actually New Yorker via the state of Washington and have lived in Tuolaton for the last twenty-two plus years. With my husband and two daughters and now only one dog Charlie, but he is kind of the center of our universe sadly. Um, we are a family who serves together. We um, enjoy being part of the um, community in a variety of different ways. Not just walking through our community, but um, doing little things in the neighborhood and those sorts of things. We started our service, or me particularly, as a youth. I grew up in a Masonic uh, family and service is um, what we do. It's just who we are and um, I have um, that ingrained in who I am. And I look forward to finding new ways to serve, not only in this role, but I do feel that um. With the group of people that we have on our city council and the CIOs and the youth that we have involved in our community. That there are opportunities to connect different resources in our community that may have not been connected before. And that is certainly a passion of mine. I um, believe that in the times that we are in, especially as the director. Um, I live and work in our community. I'm the director of a very small. And significant nonprofit in our community who seeks to build resilient skills. For youth and families through environmentally um, from through environmental impact, policy and social decisions. And that's really what made me decide to seek a position in the city council. Because I believe the decisions that we make locally. Impact um, our youth and their ability to achieve their full potential. And that is what will direct them forever and help us remember um, the decisions that we have made today. Will last forever and how will we, we will be looked back on. I'm also dedicated to the goals and decisions of this council. Um, and holding true to my beliefs as we go forward in in making our decisions. I'm looking forward to our councillor advance so that um, we can speak better as a unified group. And I am honored and humbled to get to uh, serve our community in this way. And so I'm looking forward to it. I'm ready to go.
All right. Thank you. Welcome again. Councillor Pratt, returning, returning for her sophomore year, junior year.
Yeah, I'm Valerie Pratt and I was appointed in August two thousand and nineteen. And and now I'm honored to have been elected to serve former years on city council. I've lived in Tuolaton for, uh, let's say at least twenty-five years. And um, I have three grown sons that um, none of them live in Tuolaton anymore unfortunately, but they live close. So it's just my husband, my dog and I right now. Um, I'm, I'm really looking forward to also to um, our council advance in a few weeks. So we could um, set our combined goals or agenda for the next year. And um, this last year, I've really learned that in addition to the normal things we deal with like. Traffic, for instance, in our city, that there, there can always be the unexpected. And you know, it's been the pandemic this year, um, racial injustice, the role of police. And right now they're um, unfortunately, we're seeing just violence based on racial or not racial, but political device-ness. And um, I really feel that together as a council, we can at least locally um, have our differences. But work together with um, a true focus to the betterment of Tuolaton and our city. Um, thank you again, and I'm truly honored to serve.
Well, welcome all. Um, again, uh, as you all said, we're all, we work as a team. And we all look forward to our council advance, uh, where we start to continue to gel as a team and move on and make this a terrific place to live. So our first item of business is with a new council, we select a new council president. The role of the council president is to act in my absence uh, at either events or city council meetings. Uh, one of uh, the city councillors is selected and voted upon to become the city council president. So at this time, I'll just open to the floor for nominations for our new city council president. Councillor Pratt.
I would like to nominate councillor Grimes.
All right.
Second.
All right. So councillor Grimes is on the ballot. Are there any other motions for council president? None? You don't even have to have an election, Nancy, you're re-elected. Congratulations, council president again, Grimes.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. One acceptance speech? Through your curve ball already.
It might be appropriate to vote, to take a vote on it.
Even though there's no other, there's no other nominations on the floor?
Yeah.
Even though there's no nominations yet, to get, to get a formal approval of the full council.
Remember what Sean just went over with us?
Yeah, but there's, you know, okay.
Naming.
I'm gonna go order the screen here. Uh, councillor Sacco.
Yes.
Councillor Hillier.
Yes.
Councillor Brooks.
Hi.
Councillor Pratt.
Hi.
Councillor Reyes.
Yes.
Councillor, almost president, Grimes.
Hi.
Vote I also. Now it is formalized. Again, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm so excited for the next two years and I'm so excited what we're gonna be able to accomplish together. Um, this is a wonderful group of people with a wonderful heart for service. And a wide array of talents and backgrounds. And I think it's gonna make for some fantastic opportunities for the city. And um, we have opportunities with parks, we have opportunities with our business community, affordable housing. Um, just so many things exciting going on right now and also work with the environment. And hopefully some climate change um, and climate action plans. So um, I appreciate your confidence in me. Um, I will do the best of my job to the best of my abilities. And very much looking forward to the next two years with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, uh, introduction of Metro councillor Garrett Rosenthal. Uh, councillor Rosenthal was elected uh, as our new metro councillor. He takes the place, excuse me. And on city, on metro council and represents district three, I believe, if I'm not cloudy in my head after coughing. Uh, I'm just waiting for him to pop up. There he is. Welcome councillor. Whoa, there he goes. You shifted on my screen. We can't hear you. Okay, I hear you, Garrett.
And he's not muted either. Yeah, there's an issue with his microphone, it looks like.
Can you, uh, Bates, can you work with him and then we can come back to him after the YAC?
Will do.
All right. So we'll change the order here. Uh, we have our YAC members waiting in the wings. Uh, to give us an up, uh, an update and a recap of their twenty twenty activities. Welcome. I see Julie, I see Raymond, I see Claire.
Um, yeah. Good evening, Mayor Bubinik and city council. Um, thank you so much for having us. Uh, as you said, my name is Claire Koo and I'm here tonight with Ethan Bennett and uh, Raymond Arias. On behalf of the Tuolaton Youth Advisory Council, also known as the YAC. And we'd like to take this chance to present our twenty twenty year in review.
Hi, I'm Ethan Bennett and I had the privilege of traveling to NLC this past year. I'd just like to start off by saying it was amazing learning experience for me. Sarah and I, uh, we learn, we got to learn a lot about what other YACs were doing around the country. We took part in multiple workshops of our choosing during our conference. And not only were they very informative, but they really did inspire me. In these workshops, we talked a lot about what we, along with other YACs, did throughout the past year. In addition to pressing topics at the time such as the census. If any of you are interested in hearing some of the ideas we brought back with us, please feel free to contact me through Julie. Cause we, the night, the last night we were there, me, Julie and Sarah got together and took. All of our ideas down and we have all of our ideas. So if any of you would like to hear about that, please do contact me. I'd love to share. And to end, I would just like to thank the city of Tuolaton for giving me this opportunity. It truly inspired me and changed my life.
Uh, hello, everyone. My name is Raymond Arias. I'm a senior at Tuolaton High School, as Claire said. Uh, so during this year, we obviously had some events that occurred in twenty twenty that disrupted the way that the YAC usually operated. Um, so the big one is of course COVID-19. Uh, at the beginning of March, that was right after uh, you know. Ethan and Sarah and Julie came back from uh, NLC after um. So we, the YAC as a, a, a overall had a little hiatus uh, for a couple of months until everyone was settled uh, in our group. And then uh, once we came back, uh, that's when everything started happening in, in terms of social justice advocacy. And the Black Lives Matter protests happening around our community. I believe we had two here in Tuolaton that happened. One for students and one just overall for uh, in support of uh, BIPOC community members around uh, our community. Sorry if you guys hear my little brother in the background. But um, yeah, so after the social justice advocacy protests, we just had a little, another little mini break. Um, in order to capture kind of moments, we had a lot of members within YAC participate in those um. Efforts and those marches um, that were very active. Uh, and then last of all, um. We had the fires earlier in September. Uh, we had a little break between that two. Uh, because we wanna take some time for again, everyone to get settled and make sure everyone was safe. Uh, in order to again, begin operating on, you know, items we had on our agenda. So um, yeah, if you go to the next slide, one thing we did work on uh, in light of again, the social justice. Uh, advocacy going on in our community is that we created a Black Lives Matter solidarity statement as a YAC. And at this time, I would like to read it to you all. So it says. "We, the Tuolaton Youth Advisory Council, humbly acknowledge silence during these times. Wanted to take the necessary time in an effort to be thoughtful and intentional in addressing the Black Lives Matter movement. And the impact it has had on our community, as injustices in our country and the world have become especially prevalent. The YAC stands in solidarity with the Black Lives Matter movement and condemns all acts of racism. We believe that the, we believe that systemic racism exists in our city and understand that it specifically impacts people of color. We recognize that we do not understand each affected individual's personal experience, experiences. But we will work to encourage conversation and growth as a community through listening and amplifying vo- the voices of those who have gone and heard. Through our upcoming projects, we commit to create an environment in which individuals can feel safe, heard and welcome." And yeah, so that was our Black Lives Solidarity Statement. Um, in reference to the events that uh, the projects that we are working on. I believe Claire will now touch on that.
Yes, thank you, Raymond. And um, as you have all now uh, heard from Raymond. Um, we did take a little hiatus at times, but we are currently um, back in session virtually. And are really looking forward to um, what we are going to do in twenty twenty-one. So some other YAC activities, we are currently um, in the process uh, of planning and thinking about. Um, we are currently reviewing ten new applications for um, potential additions to our YAC. Um, we are also brainstorming ideas for new projects um, regarding the social justice issues we mentioned. Uh, mental health as well in our community. And uh, also our podcast series, which we are currently in the works. Um, I'm putting out a first episode as well as the virtual Oregon Youth Summit that is coming up on February third. And I believe with that, I think that's all for our year in review. And once again, I'd like to take the time to thank all of you for having us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, questions for the YAC? Councillor Brooks.
Maybe more of a comment. I just wanted to say thank you. Your agenda sounds really inspiring. It was wonderful to spend time with you in DC. It was an amazing experience. And um, your action, I mean, I've worked in mental health and social justice for decades. So it's something that I'm very passionate about myself. And um, I think that your statement is rocking. And I also um, and, and very touching and moving. And I also um, really excited to hear about, more about the podcast. So I'm just curious, if people want to listen to the podcast, how do we tune in and how do we learn more about that? Now, I'm also wondering if you're gonna bring anything to us in February for um. For racial injustice, that conversation.
Um, great question. The podcast, uh, we are still in the process of assigning responsibilities for the first podcast episode. We are actually planning on interviewing a member of our own first, just kind of as a test run to see how things go before. Um, eventually the goal is to have guests of the Tuolaton community. Um, and we would sort of do an interview with them, sit down and chat, obviously virtually. Um, and have that be the podcast episode. Um, so we would love to share that with you if that actually comes out. Uh, hopefully in uh, in the next coming months. Um, but yeah. And regarding the February meeting, um, I'm sure we will be able to attend.
Yeah. Thank you, Claire. I'll just, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, go ahead, Julie.
I just wanted to um, say thank you to Claire and Raymond and Ethan for being here tonight. And just to add a little bit more, so once we do have that podcast in development and it's actually published live. We will make sure and let everyone know, we'll, we'll uh, be doing a extensive social media outreach on that as well. And one of the goals with that podcast is also to amplify those voices of um, our BIPOC community members. And all the voices that haven't traditionally been heard. So I think that will really tie in nicely with um, with MLK Day and that, that day of service. And, and going forward, the goals of our, our community. So we're really excited to see that happen.
Thank you. Just always impressive work. Thank you, Julie and all of you guys. So nice to see you.
Other questions or comments for our YAC members? Not seen any hands up. I just wanna thank you all for taking the time. Uh, this has been difficult uh, since March. Uh, can't imagine trying to, you know, juggle school and YAC at the same time, both virtually. Um, so you guys are almost in the same boat as we are, probably with endless Zoom meetings. Um, so stick with it. I think you've got some two very meaty issues to dive into, which social justice and mental health. And I think your BLM statement was terrific. Uh, I don't, you guys nailed it on the head. It was very well said. And I give you big kudos for that. And I look forward to seeing what you produce over the next year here. Uh, who knows if you're gonna get back into school anytime soon. But uh, stick with it, with the virtual learning um, and stay in contact with us. Cause I look forward to hearing some great things from you. All right. Have a good evening. All right. So next up, hopefully, this microphone is now working, is the introduction of Garrett Rosenthal. He's our new metro councillor. He replaces Craig Dirksen. Uh, and I asked him to continue the tradition that uh, councillor Dirksen did to come on and visit us. Uh, he tried to make it once a quarter and keep us up to date with what's going on. Uh, but many folks might not know Garrett, so here's an opportunity for Garrett to introduce himself to the city council. Welcome. No way, his microphone's still not working?
Sounds like it's still not working. If you'd indulge me for a second, mayor, hold on. Uh, councillor Rosenthal, if you can read this, uh, you can call into the meeting uh, with your cell phone. Of course, we'll get a, a plethora of random calls, I'm sure, in addition.
I get a whole bunch of telemarketing calls now. We had this happen this afternoon at the Washington County Corning Meeting. Um, Commissioner Rogers, who's the chair of the committee, his microphone wasn't working. But seems to be a little issue going on today with Zoom with microphones.
I've had mine randomly not work and it usually works, but every once in a while it'll be glitchy.
So what you can also do is uh, we'll give him a minute or so. Um, and uh, if he doesn't come through, we can go move on and public comment and bump him further down the agenda. Cause we do wanna hear from him.
Uh, mayor, I'll let you know uh, if he's able to join or not. Oh, wait, here, hold on one second. Uh, councillor Rosenthal, can you hear us?
We can see him great, but we can't hear him.
Hello? It says that I'm unmuted.
We can hear you now, Garrett.
Ah, okay. Good. I get a bit of an echo, but I guess I'll uh, I have to mute my screen. So that I don't get the echo. I still get the echo. Uh, I don't.
We're, we're not getting the echo, so as long as you can work through it, we're not hearing it.
Oh, okay, okay. That's good. Um, well anyhow, I appreciate having the opportunity to listen to the council session and the work session. It was interesting to hear all the things on the public meeting law, particularly because of course metro is held to the same thing. Although we have a slightly smaller number of people. Uh, and one of the things I've been reminded is the fact that one has to be careful also about email links. And we, I got a message today from President Peterson saying, don't send out uh, emails to more than one or two uh, fellow councillors at the same time. Cause that can constitute some sort of uh, public communication. So it's uh, it's something we all have to be very aware of. And I appreciated the uh, sort of the, the primer, the, the review of uh, the public meeting laws. So it was very good. Anyhow, I hope to uh, meet with you guys um, periodically over the year, uh, hopefully quarterly, if that's possible. And uh, to pay attention to the kinds of things that, that are of concern to you, which is transportation, solid waste, uh, housing. Uh, and uh, and such other things as well as the zoo and the performance venues and so forth. So um, I hope to be responsive and open and uh, let me know what your concerns are.
All right.
And, and I point out that I'm technically, I live in Tuolaton according to my post office box. But I actually don't live in Tuolaton. I live in the Norwood neighborhood, which is part of the controversial Stafford uh, area. So, but I do live in group, what is it, the five E or whatever it is, which is Tuolaton's area of influence.
All right. Well, thank you for.
Thank you much.
Great. Thank you for attending tonight. Uh, I know I look forward to working with you and our city council does on those things. Um, that impact us via metro, like you mentioned, be it garbage, be it. Um, that impact us via Metro, like you mentioned, be it garbage, be it transportation. Um, be it land use planning. So, does anyone have any quick questions for Garrett while he's here or? Any comments? Council Brooks?
I just wanna say congratulations um, on your win. And I'm grateful that you're gonna be serving um, our region. And it's, it's, I think it's wonderful that you live so close by us here in Twalton, so that you understand. Things that are happening here. And I also wanted to, you didn't mention parks, but I know that some parks are kind of involved as well in Greenways. And I'm just curious if you would tell us a little bit about your background with environmental science.
I'm unmuted again, from what I understand. The question has, what's my experience with environmental aspects? Alright, I spent about forty years as an environmental consultant. I'm a hydrologist and in uh, a water resources chemist. So a lot of my work has been on industrial sites, uh, as well as watersheds and water resource development. But I've done a lot of things with uh, for example, I've worked on most of the urban streams in the Portland area. So habitat restoration, upland as well as wetland, uh, water supply protection and so forth. So it's been a broad experience. It's been fun. Actually, I got a lot of field work throughout the Northwest. Uh, everywhere from the Methow Valley to in um, upstate Washington to down to the beaches of Arcata and Crescent City. So um, it, being an outdoor scientist has been great. And uh, I'm interested in policy and water resources protection.
Thank you. I look forward to, especially since I'm on the water um, committees. I'm looking forward to working with you. Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Council Rosenthal? And then, uh, again, thank you for taking some time out tonight, Council Rosenthal, and like, we all look forward to meeting you frequently and working with you.
I'll just interject that um, that we appreciate uh, Council Rosenthal making himself available. He's, he's made himself available to staff and um, we will work with his staff at Metro to make sure to get him on the agenda. On a regular basis.
Terrific. Alright. Uh, moving on, we now move into the section of the agenda where public comment. Public comment is uh, an opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone who would like to address the city council, this would be the appropriate time. Uh, do we have, I see some names here I recognize. I see Linda and the other name's dropped off. So I assume Linda does wanna speak. This might be her last time speaking to us as the CEO of the Twalton Chamber. Uh, welcome, Linda.
Good evening, Mayor Beutnick and, and city councilors. Congratulations to Kristen and Cindy. You're joining a wonderful group and Valerie, congratulations on your reelection. It's great to see you this evening. Um, yes, this is my last time as the official Twalton Chamber CEO, but you're gonna be in great hands. Roy Ghul, Ghul, Gulyati, if I can say it, Gugliata or something, I'll get it right next time. But um, he has already joined us. We've started working together. He has a wonderful background, both in chambers and um, in um. Business counseling, small business counseling particularly. So I think it's a perfect, perfect match with, for our organization. And speaking of which, tonight I'm, I'm here to speak on behalf of our small business community. Um, I, unfortunately, I apologize for getting our letter finalized and off to you late. So many of you may not have seen it, but I am representing our small business community this evening. Um, they're, they're the lifeblood of our community. They are what make us special. They provide jobs for our residents and our children. And on average, small businesses reinvest at a much higher level than the, the regional or national chains. Um, it's, the COVID pandemic has gone on to such an extent that we're now facing extinction of many of our businesses. And all the rules of the game are also very frustrating and confusing. Um, I'm sorry, you cannot tell me that a Walmart store or a Target or another big box or national chain store is safer. Than a small business. I just do not believe that that is true. And meanwhile, those big box stores and, and national chains are taking tremendous opportunity. And capitalizing on the fact that they've lost a lot of competition. Um, this is especially true for our eating establishments, drinking establishments, indoor recreation and fitness establishments. And indoor entertainment establishments. Many of these are, are now confined to takeout. And for some, that's not even physically possible, nor do they have access to outdoor dining. So we're really looking tonight to ask for your help for these businesses that are in that extreme risk category. And um, to that end, we've written this letter and there are four suggestions that are, are a little bit lengthy. So I'm, I'd like to barrel through them if I could. Um, number one. Could you send a letter to the Governor requesting collaboration with public health officials to promptly develop a protocol? For the safe reopening of all small business establishments during the extreme period, risk period. As defined by the Oregon Health Authority. Number two, introduce or support legislation that establishes the rules formulated by the Oregon OSHA. And other agencies as a standard care in lawsuits alleging damages against business owners for COVID-related injuries. And providing complete protection for li, from liability for those businesses that adhere to the standard of care. Number three, continue advocating with our legislature and our Oregon congressional delegates. To support legislation, creating a grant fund to provide relief for small businesses. Whose operations have been most severely impacted, the eating and drinking establishments, the indoor recreation and fitness establishments. The indoor um, entertainment establishments. And number four, work with the small business community to develop and implement local policies. That could allow small businesses, particularly the restaurants that do not have access to outdoor dining. To um, have an opportunity to waive any unrelated fees or necessary permits, et cetera. That would um, possibly prohibit them from opening. The time for all of us is imminent um, to take action. And we really, as the Twalton Chamber of Commerce, are asking for your support, your partnership in communicating with the Governor and our legislature. Now is the time for us to take action, or else we may not see some of our best friends and community supporters here. In our community much longer. Um, we know that small businesses can exhibit the same vigor that they do on a daily basis. To survive in being safe and providing great customer service to the community. So we're asking for your help. We're asking for your partnership and we look forward to hearing from you soon. Thank you for the lengthy letter. And I, I didn't even hear the bell go off, so I appreciate it.
You're getting close. You're just under the wire. Alright. Um, thanks Linda for the letter. Um, just for points one through three, uh, those are being addressed by the Oregon Mayors Association, by the Metro Mayor's Consortium. Pretty much exactly as you're saying, asking for changes to the reopening plan for small businesses in the state of Oregon. Governor Brown's office and OHA has been heavily lobbied by those organizations and illegal Oregon cities. Uh, to look at what happened in Washington State and see what's going on in Washington State. The latest we heard is the Governor uh, might change, uh, and I should say the Governor slash OHA. Might change the rules in eight days. For some reason, they have this ten-day rule. They're waiting to see what happens. With the post-Christmas COVID, hopefully non-rush, that uh, there isn't a surge. Um, but I definitely in total agreement on items one through three. And I will, uh, along with city council, will discuss with Sherilyn, drafting a letter for that. And item number four, I recall back in March, and this will, I'm gonna loop in Sherilyn. That the city was more than happy to work with restaurants who wanted to expand out, outside. Uh, maybe using their parking lots, using city right-of-way. And as I recall, we were waiving fees and uh, regulation, not safety regulations, no. But we were very amenable and flexible uh, on restaurants using their outdoor space. So I'll ask Sherilyn to, am I remembering that right in our conversation?
Oh yes, definitely, for sure, Mayor. Um, and we had a number of businesses that did take advantage of that, mostly at Bridgeport Village. Um, some of the other ones uh, didn't, don't have that much of an opportunity, but those that did took advantage of it. Um, and yes, you're absolutely right. We expedited uh, permits. We worked with the fire department to make sure that, that safety and um, ingress egress was achieved. And that um, that we were doing whatever we could.
Sounds like that might be an opportunity for us to get the word back out again. And I know it's winter, but still, people are out and about. Bridgeport Village was very busy this weekend.
Yeah, and I know the business on the commons, we've always been very flexible in the commons, in the commons, to use the space on the commons. And uh, you know, so we, yeah, we definitely want our small businesses to survive here in the city. You know, we've had our small business uh, grant program, the BRC. So you know, I for one am a big advocate for small businesses. As ours, the rest of our city council. So um, I know Bridgette uh, wants to say something in a sec. But uh, I'll circle back with councilors and uh, Sherilyn about items one through three. And uh, I'll bring your comments to the Metro Mayor's Consortium, the Oregon Mayors Association and LOC. As just further uh. Fodder, if you will, for change, um, that the Governor is uh, hearing it from a lot of communities. We don't wanna be the community, I'm not gonna name any communities, but there's a certain movement of mayors who are going, you know, advocating for total disregard. Of the OHA's policies and that's something I wouldn't go for. But I'm certainly totally down with uh, asking for change and adjustments, so our businesses can reopen. And operate safely and not close their doors permanently. So I don't, Council Brooks had her hands up.
Well, speaking of item number four, um, I just wanna say. I saw from some of the NLC things that I've been reading, um, some people are using grant money. Towards um, helping small businesses with um, spa, with the heaters, outdoor heaters and tents. And I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity also that we could consider as a council around innovations like that.
I know, I, I'm assuming when the new administration takes over, we're gonna see a whole uh, swath of new programs. That will help out both residents and uh, businesses. So. Council Hillier?
Uh, yes, thank you. Could I get a copy of it, please, of the letter? Does everyone have a copy?
Uh, I got one earlier this after, I mean, it was late afternoon.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I'd just love to be able to have that, thanks.
I have it for the record, Council Hillier, and I'll also forward you the email.
Okay, okay. Uh, with that, I just wanna, this is my last opportunity to do this on camera. To thank Linda for her years of service as the CEO of the Twalton Chamber of Commerce. Um, you've been CEO as long as I can remember, uh, being a member of the chamber. And you have spent countless hours advocating for businesses. Uh, you are one of the fiercest advocates for businesses in Twalton and also residents. You straddle both sides, looking out for the community as a whole. And I just wanna thank you for your efforts. Uh, you and I have had many, many conversations over the years. Most of the time, we agreed. Sometimes we did not. But we also listen, you also always listen to each other respectfully and respect each other's opinions, never got nasty. And uh, I appreciate that with you and I look forward to seeing what you do in the community in your retirement. Cuz uh, for those who don't know, that Linda's last day is the fifteenth, correct?
Yes. It is so bittersweet. Um, I won't miss your one o'clock meetings. I must. I must let you know that, that that's not gonna be something I miss, but you will see me. I have such a passion to continue volunteering with the hashtag Work Ready Program, which is a part of our wonderful Dr. Sue. Brought with her from Springfield that we have implemented here in the Tiger Twalton School District. And then on the ICH Foundation, now that I'm truly an old relic, I, I fit right in. So anyway, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with you all and thank you um, for the kind words, Mayor. I feel like we have worked really hard to come to common ground and make decisions where we agree. And to, you know, respectfully disagree. And yeah, we can get heated, but we're not nasty. And I, I hope we can bring that to our community and across the country, because we need some healing, some serious healing right now.
Yep, yep. Aren't you also gonna be, uh, don't you advocate for STEM and STEAM?
Yep, that's with our hashtag Work Ready Program. Yes. Anyway, thank you all and thank you for listening tonight. And I look forward to, to hearing great things from this council. I love the lady power, the women power. No offense, Mayor, but this is gonna be a good year. Thanks, guys.
Alright, thank you, Linda. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Uh, I see, did you see anybody Bates with their hands up? I can't see the. Hands raised.
Uh, no, no mayor and no one's here at the uh, full center either.
Alright, okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, tonight, the consent agenda, these items are considered routine and we adopt it by one motion. Unless someone on the council would like one of them removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of, come on, computer. Item number one, consideration of approval of the city work counts, the, the city council work session. And regular meeting minutes of December fourteenth, twenty twenty. Item two, consideration of resolution number five, three, three, two, dash, twenty-one. Accepting two thousand nineteen urban areas securities initiative grant funds. To support the Twalton Community Emergency Response Team, otherwise known as CERT. Number three, consideration of resolution number five, three, 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 dash, twenty-one. Authorizing network equipment, design materials and installation purchase through an interstate cooperative procurement. Item number four, consideration of resolution number five, three, three, four, dash, twenty-one. Authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement for a metro area communications commission grant. And appropriating and appropriating special purpose revenues in the city's general fund during fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Item number five, consideration of resolution number five, three, three, five, dash, twenty-one. Warn in the contract for construction of the Twalton Commons Fountain renovation project and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract. And finally, item number six, consideration of resolution number five, three, three, six, dash, twenty-one. Authorizing the city of Twalton to enter into a memorandum of understanding with National Parks and Recreation Association, NRPA. Is there any item that a council would like to have removed consent tonight?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
A motion, a second, to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on the motions? Alright, so, Council Sacco?
Aye.
Council Hillier?
Aye.
Council Pratt?
Aye.
Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council President Grimes?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye also. Thank you. Moving on to general business, item number one, consideration of recommendations from the commu, council committee on advisory appointments. Who would like to speak on behalf of the three-member committee?
I can do it. Or, sorry, did you wanna go fail? Alright, I just wanna thank everyone that submitted their applications and came for an interview. It's always difficult when there's three positions and fifteen people applying for them to make a decision. We have an amazing community and every time we do these interviews, I'm reminded at the outstanding quality of people that live. And that are willing to serve our community. And I encourage all those who applied that did not um. Make the uh, committee to please keep reapplying for other committees. People had um, so much to, so much passion, so much to offer, highly educated, just all different kinds of talent. People had um so much to, so much passion, so much to offer, highly educated, just all different kinds of talent, skills and resources to bring to our city. Um, we did re uh we did re um confirm uh I have my list here. Chris Broome, John Hamman, and um congratulations on your reappointments. And we have a new appointee, Kelly Horstford, who's going to bring a lot. Um, she's been very involved with the Byram Schools and all kinds of other community engagement work and um and I think she's going to bring a lot to our committee. So thank you again to everybody and thank you also to Counselor Pratt and Counselor Reyes for working so well together. Um, when we're making these really tough decisions where we wish we could just appoint everybody.
You also had four reappointments for the core area.
Do you want to speak to that, Valerie?
I don't have the names of the people in front of me, but they were all reappointments. And I know Dr. Welkin, Dr. Jordan were two of them. I don't have the, um, I don't know if Nicole's got the list.
I have it. It's uh Gary Haberman, Heidi Kendall, Bill Jordan and Aaron Welk.
Yes. So um, again, these are great people and um it's, it's just nice. I mean, it's, it's every time we meet with people, it's just amazing how many people want to serve our community and are really dedicated to doing that.
All right. With that, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the council committee assignments.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the recommendations of the council committee on advisory appointments and discussions on those motions. Seeing none, uh, Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
I vote aye also. It's unanimous. Next item on our general business is consideration of Stone Ridge Park redesign report. And I see Ross and Rich has popped up.
Well, well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councillors. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight. Um, let's talk about Stone Ridge Park. Uh, this project uh came out of our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, the the late two thousand eighteen work uh that really included a lot of different projects throughout our park system. Uh, a big, a big bucket of projects. Uh, T-Park spent many, many hours talking about how do we prioritize this pretty sizable list of potential projects within our park system. Some of those projects small, some of those projects really asking the community to reimagine some spaces and and really rethink and plan for the future generations of of users of our parks. Well, Stone Ridge Park was one of those um that really begged for re-imagination and an opportunity, uh, a unique opportunity to connect with community members uh who uh where where English is not the second, is not the first language, is the second language. And a really, a really high equity impact uh area of our community. And so that is the work that uh city staff and T-Park uh set up, set out on. And so this, this project was included in the uh, the current fiscal year budget to reimagine uh the park. Uh, reimaginea el parque. So Stone Ridge Park, for those of you who aren't aware of where Stone Ridge Park is, um, it is located on sixty eighth off of Sager, right, sort of across from it, Folletie Park. And it's on a loop, uh, a road sixty eighth sort of loops around in in a neighborhood. And it is a, it is a small park and we'll talk a little bit more about this, but what we wanted to do tonight was, was talk to you about how we, how we connected with our community members in a truly meaningful way. It was really the, the focus of this project in a different way, in taking a different approach. In doing so, uh, while in the midst of a pandemic. And so we want to talk about the, the creative solutions that we developed uh in working with our consultant, uh Shapiro Didway, uh, our, our landscape architect consultant uh to, to lead this project. So the project uh consisted of uh first a site assessment, uh, community engagement that was, that was first Spanish. And we really meaningfully tried to connect with our community members using Spanish first. It was a concept development and uh identifying desired park amenities. And then taking those um to a preferred conceptual design and in some early schematic design work too. And then to, to uh also end with just the cost estimation. What, what would this, what would this cost the city to reimagine this park in the fashion that directly came from engagement with our community members who live uh and play in this neighborhood? So a quick background on the site, you can see an image there of Stone Ridge Park. Uh, you can see the Rolling Hills Apartments on the other side of that uh, that fence. Um, so this park was built back in the late seventies, early eighties. Uh, the city staff have uh replaced elements. Um, this park is um, it's a pocket park, small. And um, as I mentioned earlier, this is a, this is one of our Parks and Recreation Master Plan uh initiatives uh that was prioritized pretty high amongst many projects uh is also included um in, in alignment with our twenty thirty vision for the city. So Rich, um, Rich is going to uh take it from here. He's going to talk a little bit about more detail about how did we do this in the midst of a pandemic?
Good evening, um, Mayor and councillors. So the site assessment, you can see, I'm not going to go over the different um elements and components of the site assessment. We uh brought on a planning consultant, Shapiro Didway, whose staff per um provided and performed this assessment to see what is in the park right now and what are the opportunities um as we move forward with this planning process? The public engagement was, as with all park in recreation programs and projects, was very important. And so Ross had mentioned, we had a bilingual engagement process. We took a Spanish-first approach to the information, the notifications, the webpage, um, the different posters and flyers that went out. There, there was really, because this is a pocket park, there was really a neighborhood focus. So we really focused on the neighborhood, which is that Stone Ridge subdivision and the three apartment complexes um adjacent to or within close proximity of the park. The, these are some of the different elements and you can see an example of some of the uh posters and flyers. The community engagement, the, the couple main um components of it were two park open houses, one early in July, one late in August. And these were done with social distancing, all the COVID protocols. Face coverings were provided, uh, markers around the park for families to uh immediate households to gather in and, and be part of this engagement, which um both engagements, there are multiple stations that the consultant staff, um, most if not many, many, if not most of them um bilingual engaged in the neighborhood. And that e- each open house led to a online survey, which we'll talk about here in a minute. The school lunch program was delivered to the apartment complexes. Uh, there was a delivery site in Rolling Hills Apartment, which is connected to the north end of the park. And so there is an opportunity to be engaged with um many people during the school lunch program in partnership um with the school district. The, the other school engagement that we um connected into was a relationship with Bridgeport School. And that relationship started and was built when we engaged the, the youth of Bridgeport School to select the play equipment that was put into a Folletie Park. And so the, the school staff, even though school wasn't in session, were great in providing notifications to their students and families um through email and, and, and other methods. You can see there was some focus group meetings, diversity task force um was key and, and real valuable in providing information for this project. And then um some city staff and it's as well as the apartment complexes. The open houses, you can see um some, some of the pictures and you can see the little diff- the, the things on the asphalt uh for distancing, families kept in, in groups and the different canopies set up are the different stations for them to go for engagement. And, and some of the engagement were, you know, what kind of amenities, what kind of facilities, what kind of features would you like in your park? And that information was taken and, and put into a couple of design options. Here are the survey in, in overall seven hundred, over seven hundred and fifty people, about between seven hundred and fifty and eight hundred people um were involved in this project. It, we had over a hundred people at each of the open houses. Here's the survey results. You can see survey number one, hundred and thirty-five responses, number two, a hundred and forty-one responses. Approximately fifty percent of the responses in each of the two surveys were taken in Spanish. And I'm going to pass it back to Ross at this point.
Thank, thank you, Rich. And uh, so the big question is, what, what did we hear? What is that future vision for this space? This space that really, really is the, the key area of gathering? This is the key gathering space for this, this road, this street on bordered ones, on one side by Sager. And um th- this is the gathering space. So what does that look like? What did this, what did this space really want to become per the residents who live here and enjoy the space? Um, through this iteration that Rich described, through the onsite uh meetings uh, which was done almost exclusively in Spanish, the surveys of which about half the respondents were in Spanish. Uh, this is what we heard and this is what we heard the community would like to see. Uh, some type of a spray water feature, a basketball court, uh improved site security, a path, a path to simply walk on, some seats in picnic tables, areas of shade, play structures for children, a climbing uh feature, something that kids can climb on, maybe that's a rock, uh, public, uh, public art. Let's incorporate public art into this design. Um, something that can host community events and activities, a place to bring the dogs, uh, an improved grass area, improved site maintenance, some new plantings and a drinking fountain. So that's the, the pretty big list. So now uh comes sort of the second phase. Okay, let's take those ideas and our landscape architect came up with some great concept drawings. Those drawings went back to the community. And so what you're seeing here is design option A and design option B. This is the result of the community then, then looking at those designs and providing feedback again. And so design option A, you can see a play structure, uh, swings, a, a small, a small splash area. Um, you can see a lawn area. You can see the benches and drinking fountain and a small sports court. And, and actually, all of those elements are incorporated in both designs. Um, Rich, if you can talk a little bit about what, what makes, what makes A different than B? Uh, if you can talk a little bit about our property owners to the north and to the east.
Right. So o- option A actually goes into some of the apartment complex property. And we engaged with the owners and the management of the apartment complex. And this is Rolling Hills, two hundred, approximately two hundred and seventy-seven units. And we engage with them and they're very receptive to an easement that provides that access. We have absolutely no accessible access from the apartment complex into the park. And we do this, and we've done this with many apartment complexes throughout town in our trail and park access. Uh, the most recent section of trail behind uh, you know, Nightbird Rivers, Cabela's and New Seasons. We have, we have several um easement agreements with those apartment complexes. So the apartments can access into the trail and, and this would be a similar situation. And so A shows um use and a connection to the apartments. B were more restricted to just the park area and, and, and so don't have as much um are not pushing the park out as far and providing as large amen- as, 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 you know, with the bigger amenities, more space for the park.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Rich. A couple of items I just wanted to point out in both designs. Um, very important as we're thinking about our, all of the projects as we're moving forward as a Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, obviously a city council goal, but that's environment and environmental stewardship. And as we're, as we're making improvements to parks, uh, I think this design really um brings that into, into uh reality, that, that you can see the stormwater planters, the rain gardens throughout the park um where the water um that doesn't, you know, it stays on that, on the site in those storm planting areas. Um, and you'll see a uh, a material, a call for materials to be used that are sustainable. So those are two, two uh elements I wanted to call out. The other is this street is a, it, it, cars can drive through this street pretty quickly. And so in conversations with uh public works uh in engineering, you'll see on both designs is a street art. So some type of a raised um area of the street, not necessarily a, a speed bump area, but, but a raised area of the street that have some, some type of art element, either printed in, impacted into the asphalt or concrete, uh, some type of paint or surface treatment to that, that the community will be engaged in, in, in deciding. And also um uh mural, opportunity for, for murals in both designs. So that really this is, does the, some of the mural and art that happens onsite is designed and, and participatory by the, the residents who live in this area. So the, obviously the preferred design based on the surveys was option A. Um, you can see it in both English and Spanish here. And um if you, these, these are not the, the most zoomed in overview uh layouts, but uh you certainly in your packet can, can look at those and zoom in and see exactly what's happening. Um, and so this is the, this is the concept design that the community uh voted on and preferred. And here are some uh conceptual images from our landscape architecture firm uh to kind of see what that, what this might look like. You'll see the splash pad feature or spray area. Um, these are really uh indicators of what could be there uh conceptually uh without having um further design. This, this gives us a, an idea, a hint of what it could look like. And uh, Rich is going to talk about next steps. What's next after we've completed this design process?
So exploring, finding funding opportunities and options, trying to secure and determine and then secure those funding opportunities. Um, a little bit of design refinement based on uh public utilities and some other factors and then right into construction drawings and plans, construction project and the park will be ready for the neighborhood. And we don't have a timeline for this. It, it's dependent upon um available funds. With, with that, I do want to mention at the December eighth meeting, the um Twalton Park Advisory Committee reviewed the report and is recommending um to council um to accept and approve the report. With that, uh, we'll be happy to answer any questions. I can stop sharing here. There we go.
Hubert, again, you might have to bring it back up if they have questions.
Oh, okay.
Open the floor. Questions for Ross and Rich. Valerie's hands up first, follow by Bridget.
Oh, I just wonder, you, you guys did an amazing job. I don't know how you, I mean, you guys shared such shining examples of outreach to our community and especially during a pandemic. It's amazing you were able to talk to that many people. And one thing I really noticed about this part that I think is so awesome is you've, you kind of incorporated so much into such a small area that. You know, takes into account everything from the youngest children to the older kids and adults. And it's just wonderful and even the dogs. But my one question I had was, I noticed that security was a pretty big question in that word thing. And you said something about poor lighting, but I'm wondering what the security concerns were and how you've dealt with them.
Thank you, thank you, Council Pratt. So you will see in the conceptual design, some indication of of where some lights might go. Obviously, need some further design work, so illuminating the space. One thing that's unique about this, this space right now is that there are some pretty mature trees onsite. And so there are some places to sort of hide. And so using, using the SEPTED principles, the the community policing through environmental design principles. Our landscape architect really focused on how can we create some passive surveillance of this site? So as people are driving by, as you're walking by, you can see what's happening on this site. And so if you, if you look at some of those images to those renderings of what it could look like, you can, you can see all the way through. The materials, the, the, the design of of some of those hints of what a playground could look like, largely netting that you can see through. And and so those were just a few of the elements I think that. Will will encourage community members to to have eyes on the site, you can see right through it. The other, the other thing that I will mention is that this is a space that. Really looks welcoming with a path all the way through it from north to south. And so people will use that path and they'll use that path to walk from the apartments to the park. Instead of, instead of going through a hole in the fence, this now becomes a place to gather and where families can come. And that really helps too with any, any potential issues on a site.
Great, thank you.
Council Brooks and then Council Sacco.
Um, thank you both, Ross and Rich, for your presentation and all your hard work and thoughtfulness. I agree with Council Pratt, I look at just the incredible amount of thoughtfulness in this. And how much is integrated into a small place? And for me, some of the innovative things, like I am not surprised that they picked this option because of the easement. And I think it's such a creative use of the easement. And you know, it's something we look at as as real estate appraisers. So it's interesting to see this, this is so clever to me. And also the traffic slowing incorporation of art, obviously being on the arts committee is something that I know. That you're really invested in, in the way that you communicated with the, with the community. And I want to say, I had curiosity around the court, the play court. It's a multi-use, so I was just wondering if it was that same sport. I always forget the name of the soccer, hard, hardscape soccer.
Yeah, the the foots, footsall court, footsall court that's at, at Folley.
Yeah, is that what this is or is this basketball or what is this?
So that that's a multi-sports court. And so there will be a basketball hoop there. And the potential is right under the basketball hoop to have a small goal area just for kicking a ball. The other thing is to have multiple court layouts on on the surface. Where different games and activities can be played.
Cool, so they could do drills there and then go play the game across the street with the nets. And there's a lot of flexibility there, that sounds really interesting to me. I had one other question and I'm forgetting what it is right now, I'm sorry. But, oh, the green, all the, can you tell me more about the stormwater drainage and what that is like, what that looks like? And the other thing I want to not forget about is a discussion around the density. Because you noted that it's a dense area and right now it's really kind of underdeveloped. I mean, I talked about this at a previous meeting where some of our parks are just so much more. You know, developed and attended to, and then there's some that are less. And so I'm really interested in attending to these that are right near this really concentrated group of people. So I'm just curious more about that as well, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you, Council Brooks. Yeah, those, those rain gardens, those, those sort of storm, storm areas where the water from the basketball court potentially is coming from. Where the, the water from the hardscape surfaces is able to go into and and create a. Percolative effect of the, of those areas, right? So the water's not going into our storm system, it's filtering through the, the soil that's there. And and treated in the process. And so some of that, some of that onsite treatment of of rainwater, of runoff. Is is really what what we would like to do as we're, as we're thinking about new parks developments. It certainly had an application here, specific to the fact that we're increasing, potentially increasing impervious surface on this site. And so not only does it have a need, it 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 it's also a solution that can be applied throughout the park system. Where there's not a need, where we can treat, treat those areas, those, that water on onsite. And then, yeah.
About that, so when we do that, just because we've been raising so much awareness with those stormwater drain mural projects and things like that about going, water going in, that kind of runoff going into our rivers. Will we have educational pieces, bilingual educational pieces about how that works so that kids and families can learn about that?
Great, great question. We, we didn't identify that in the conceptual phase of this, but that's certainly something that that we could bring up and talk about. And I don't see why that wouldn't be something that we could install at at some of these sites throughout the city. Much like as you indicated, our storm, storm drain art really is dual purpose. It's art and it's education at the same time.
Right.
And if I, I think you may have had a second question, Council Brooks about.
Density, about how many people live there and what kind of needs and how does that compare with other parks, et cetera?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So this area of of Twolleton is a, is the highest density of Spanish speakers in our community. This, this area of Twolleton. It is, is really a. It's the part of our community that that quite honestly, we've been trying to connect to. And so as staff is when we hear, when we hear city council, when we hear your council goal about creating an equitable, inclusive community. This, this looks to us as staff as one of those sites of opportunity. And really an opportunity to make that connection through this process. Is what, and if I can speak for Rich and it looks like Julie's on the call as well. That we, we as staff, we, we build playgrounds and we do programs. But but really what we're doing is is making those connections with our community members. And this was one of those projects, quite honestly, that we feel really good about. And feeling like we, we, we really were able to meaningfully connect with our community members. And so from a density perspective, this is a high density community. It's virtually all duplexes. And it is, there, there, there are a lot of people that live in this area. And it's bordered on the north by high density apartments as well. And this is the, this is the primary space for recreation.
I just think it's so important, I just want to say, I really appreciate the work. Because I don't think people feel connected when they, when they're kind of neglected. And we have so many people in this, in this little park, you know, is really kind of in tough shape. And so to, you know, to be more inclusive really means to invest in those areas. And I'm also specifically interested in this because as we're looking at developing in Basalt Creek and things like that. I don't want to end up in situations too where you, where we have higher density and less services for the people that live there. It feels in a, it doesn't feel equitable to me. And I'm really glad that we're taking some efforts to invest in those areas. It just really means a lot to me. So I just want to say that out loud and appreciate the work of 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 being mindful in this way and being attentive in this way. And in that all of our kids and in in our community matter. And I just want to say that all of our families matter, whatever the families are like.
Council Sacco, then Council Reyes.
Hi Ross, hi Rich. I just want to say thank you for all the details in the packet. It was eye opening to go through the entire thing. But if you haven't, it was very detailed. And one of the things that really stood out to me is when I read all the comments in the packet. I was really able to get a sense of who the people in the community are. How they view that park today and what they imagine for their community in the future. And that really struck a chord with me. So thank you for sharing all of those comments. And there was a lot of comments, so you can see that they were very engaged in the process. And again, that just, that really meant a lot to see those comments and really get a feeling for what that community. What that community feels this, this space can be. So thank you for that. And I also wanted to say thank you for the effort you put forth to making this Spanish first in a pandemic. And you know, you did the right thing and not the easy thing, and I just want to applaud you for that, thank you.
Council Reyes.
Yeah, I echo what everyone is saying. I think it's wonderful that we are re-majina this park, reimagining this park. I really think it's really important that the community feels connected, that they took part of it, so kudos to you and your team. Where are we? I, I see that there are two questions that I have. So one is, they, they chose this preferred design, right? Were there a, were there something that they, did they tell you why this was a preference? Or was that just, did you go based on votes versus, hey, why do you think this is a good, a good design? I'm just wondering if there, I'm just curious to hear what they, they thought of why choosing this design or other, the other design.
So, so they chose the different elements, the, you know, wanted an older children's playground, younger children's playground, a water feature, a climbing feature. The court was very important. They, they selected those and then through the public process, really refined. And where did they want those features within the park? And so that really is what ended up being the preferred design is what they want, what the neighborhood wants in their park. And a little bit on where would they like it placed within the park? Some, some things, the consultant brought some expertise to the basketball court. You don't want right next door residents because the bouncing ball makes noise, things like that. The, the splash pad element closer to public utilities and infrastructure is a benefit. So, so there was some things that, you know, came in the door that made sense as well.
And then the other question is, where are we like, so working with my community, thank you very much for bringing the Spanish. Element into the, all this, so working with my community, they're, they go through a lot of planning on doing this. And so I want to know the timeline or is there like, when is this gonna start? Or what's next after they have given you input, selected a design? And so the next thing will be, what will be, when, when, what's the timeline? And is it budgeted, do we have a budget to do this or how's it gonna be financed?
Great, great question, Council Reyes, thank you. One of the things that we're keenly aware of is that. We, we want, we want this meaningful connection we've been able to achieve with this project to mean something. And we want, we would like to be able to ensure that the relationships we as staff have developed with our community members through this project are maintained. And demonstrating our integrity that, that this is not, that this is not just a concept. That there is intention here as indicated from the work, Councilor Sacco and Councilor Pratt, as both of you were on T-Park. Through the, through the master plan and and prioritization process, this is one of the desires of our community and and a place we want to invest. And so to your question, how do we pay for this? I think is if I can paraphrase what you've asked. It's a great question. And as Rich in his presentation identified, we are in the process preliminarily have identified some likely funding sources. What we do know, we are certain of is that COVID. So the sole, the sole funding source for parks projects, grants from the state of Oregon is, is funded by lottery. And so the lottery budget, lottery revenue has took a huge hit during COVID. And so that, that funding mechanism, that source, it will be much less than it was in in future years or or the next, the next year. What we do know is that in all likelihood, this is a highly competitive project for the Metro Bond that passed recently, a year ago now. That, that Metro Bond has a several grant fund programs that this will likely be eligible for. In addition to that, what, what we also know is that. We, we will need some matching dollars. And, and so there, we will need to have a conversation about how we, how we find those matching dollars. And some of those matching dollars will likely need to be local dollars. And so certainly through the next stage of design, we'll need some funding for that as well. To get us to a place where this is ready to go to construction. And then obviously, the construction is the larger expense item that will cobble together those grant dollars matching with local.
Do we have like a timeline or something that we know that, okay, within the next six and a month? Or we just don't know, we're just kind of wait, are waiting for the state or the metro dollars from the bond to start distributing? Is that also, is that bond? Also like they know or do they have to go through a process as well? And the reason I ask is because if we want to, we, you know, we've talked about fees for in our water bills and all that. So it would be easy to explain to the community. That this is a concept and then in the, we're looking for funding. Because a lot of times in our mind, when you're, you're preparing something like that, and I can tell you in my mind, I'm thinking, oh. And this is before I started being, you know, I started, I became a counselor. I thought, oh, they're having all these concepts and they're asking me for my opinion, that means that there's money ready to, to be, you know. Ready so it can start breaking ground and and building. But it's just a way of when I'm asked, I can say, well, you know, we're still looking for funding, it's gonna take probably another six, seven months or. I, I think it's important because then they get this, they get discouraged because you built momentum here with them and the community that speaks Spanish. And then they're gonna wander a six, a, a year from now and nothing's happening. So they're gonna wonder what happened, did their opinion just went to the wayside? Or is the city still moving forward with this? So I think that's very important for them to understand that for us, and I'm a, I'm a Latino. So to understand the, that the fact that this is gonna take some time to be developed. And that's why I was asking, so one of the things I can say to the community is like, oh, you know, that bill that's gonna, you know, the water bill, that's what's gonna fund this. Or the property taxes or a bond or so many different sources are coming. So I just, that's one of the reasons why I was asking about. the property taxes or a bond or so many different sources are coming. So I just, that's one of the reasons why I was asking about the timeline of how or when are we going to start seeing some kind of movement uh to see this develop?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Counsel Reyes. If I can just um ask Rich. So Rich was a project manager on this project and, and just fantastic job, Rich. So thank you for all your work on this project. Rich has thought about this. And uh, thought about it and talked about this. Uh, very thing, Counsel Reyes. And so Rich, if you can talk just a little bit about sort of the, the concept for how in this interim period, what, what sort of we initially have come up with to, to keep that connection and maintain engagement?
Yes, potentially funding may take time to um determine and obtain. And so in the meantime, we want to keep engaged with the neighborhood. We want to keep things moving forward. We're very transparent in letting them know that we do need to obtain funding to build the park. But several ideas came up, um, the artwork, what would the neighborhood like in the way of art in a park? The um street treatment, uh potentially a raised street treatment. We've talked with engineering. There may be an opportunity in the transportation bond funds to do something there. The park name, no, no one knows. What Stone Ridge means, it, it was a subdivision, but the park name to engage the neighborhood in selecting a park name that's meaningful and um the, the, the neighborhood would like to call this public place. Those are all ideas that um we're thinking of moving forward with um between now and when funding can, available funding can be found for the construction of the project.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray. Thank you for um this wonderful presentation and the work.
Other questions or comments? I just have my, my favorite go-to, you guys know, is this screams community development block grant. Especially considering the census track it's in. Those dollars might actually increase with the new administration. So maybe see where we are next year, maybe uh get a, an application in for a grant next budget cycle. Because these kind of things went back when I was on the committee, parks got funded all the time. And uh I've watched parks go up in many a city in Washington County. So, you know, it could be our turn to get some community development block grant money, especially in that community because it's, it's the poster child, if you will, for community development block grant. That's why the whole program exists is for that community right there, that part of our town.
Yeah, we, we attended the workshop to position, to put in uh potentially uh an application. This year, there, there wasn't much money available. I, I'm not sure if it was a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars, but not much through community development block grants for public facilities.
Right. Um, I know once new administration comes in, different uh, different folks will be in charge of these programs. After years of cuts, I envision uh ideally, fingers crossed, community development block grant and home funds will be increased. Uh, and that's where Counsel Brooks comes in to be our advocate on the path that if we do apply for an application and there is funds that, you know, we do get those dollars. And as Ross and Rich mentioned, part of the deal is though for a community development block grant is you do have to add matching funds. So it's, it's not a hundred percent free money. Uh, you do have to have up to sometimes twenty-five, thirty percent matching. Uh, the more of them look better in your, as far as points. But uh those programs are terrific to fund public facilities. Uh, that's what helped paid for the improvements in the pole center years ago. So, and the crosswalk over at Alpha Lottie Park, this community development block money. Crosswalk and a sidewalk improvement. So um, that's a terrific program and we might be able to get, I, there's so many different flavors of community development block rant outside of the ones that Washington County administers. All the new P B G programs that came out of the CARES funding. You know, maybe someone just, you know, would mine those documents to see what's in there to see if we can extract some dollars. Anything else?
Can I ask one question? I, I think that how, what is the total cost of building, say in the ideal world and we have the money and we're ready to move forward? What is the total cost of uh make building this, the, the park? Or remodeling or reimagining this part?
So everything that's left to do, which would be the construction drawings, the, the design refinement, all the way to the end of construction, environmental permitting, different permits. Everything has been costed or estimated, estimated at two point seven five million.
Thank you.
And then can you remind us how many people it's going to serve?
I, I, I wasn't able to hear that question.
I just was wondering if you could remind us how many people that's going to serve?
So, so I, I'm, I don't know, within the report, I believe we have some numbers. But it's a Stone Ridge subdivision um in primarily duplexes and triplexes and I, is, is I remember, I think that maybe ninety-something households there, two hundred and seventy-seven apartments adjoining and then two other apartment complexes which are smaller than Rolling Hills. And one, as I remember, a hundred and thirty-seven or so units and, and the other one much smaller, I believe than that. Um, we could find a number, um, but I, I don't have it right off the top of my head.
Yeah, if I can add, um, Rich, really quickly, just the, uh, a casual anecdotal. If you drive through this neighborhood and see the number of cars that are parked in this neighborhood, we have a substantial um group of, group of community members here. And so that's very anecdotal and um not accurate whatsoever, but, but um it's worth driving through on, on sixty-eighth uh if you have a chance.
And also I, may I just ask, uh, add a little bit when it comes to culturally, we tend to gather even if it's like for instance, the shell, shell and apartments or the, the area where the um there will be other, I guess there will be other people within the city that will come that have families probably living in that area. So it's not always like if I have a family member that listens to rain at the Rolling Hills apartment, then I will go, I will go see them and they will probably hang out at the park. So you, there's just a lot of movement in our community, my community that you probably must be serving a lot of people there um in a good way because they do like to enjoy the parks and they like gatherings. So.
Thank you. A lot of units, not including like what you said, travel to and also if there's dense families living within the units. Et cetera, et cetera. There's a lot of different generational living and, and things like that. And also what happens with financial issues and we're going to be coming up on that as well. And so um, anyway, I just, I think it's really important to be mindful with the numbers about how many people would actually be using it.
All right. Anything else? Well, thanks Ross and Rich for the update and uh do we need to vote to accept the report? All right. Uh, so I need a motion a second to accept the Stone Ridge Park redesign report.
I motion that we accept the Stone Ridge Park designer.
Lots of people go for the second. All right. I have a motion and a second to accept the Stone Ridge Park redesign report. Any discussions on the motion? All right. Seeing none. Uh, Counsel Sacco?
Aye.
Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
Counsel Pratt? Didn't hear you. Who didn't hear you?
Yes.
All right, now we heard you. Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes?
An enthusiastic, yes, that was fabulous.
I vote aye also. It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, moving on to the agenda. Uh, items removed from consent, we had none tonight. Uh, so moving down, uh, council communications, any council communications? Counsel Brooks?
Hi, um, I just wanted to give a few updates to the community. Um, my suggestion is to look at January's regional water news from our regional water consortium. There is information about emergency preparedness, including a calendar for, from Red Cross to do a checklist about how prepared you are with water, including your pets. The water conservation homepage is a good thing to look at. It's also official that Wilsonville's back in the water consortium, so we should all know that. And um they're talking about gardening season and now is a good time to look for um their new flora website with over two hundred native Oregon plants. And also a Waterwise plant site, which has a webpage for gardening tips and plant suggestions. And the other final thing on that is that the annual report is also posted there. So that it might be something that people in the community are interested in. I mentioned earlier during work session, but for the public, LIP, um, the local implementation plan for Washington County for the planning for the metro housing bond. Um, I will be sitting on the phase two planning. Um, and I'm very, very uh touched that they would ask me to continue to serve on that committee. Um, and I will continue to advocate for our community. And I also want to say that through that work, I have been in communication with Family Promise of Twelten, Rose Money, their executive director, and Stacy Pollard, Pollard, our regional director. And looking forward to um some of the narratives that they've shared around the challenges that people have around transportation. Stories around dealing with houselessness and homelessness during the pandemic and also some of the changes that they were able to make in their treat, in their treatment protocols around they were only treating families, um, serving families, and now they're serving individuals as well. And part of that has to do with the things that we've done here um with advocating for the hotel motel vouchers. And um they're able to serve many more people and plan to continue to um have their expanded treatment protocol going forward or modality of service, however you want to look at it. Um, I also want to mention that we will be moving to listen to the um applicants and also celebrating Val, um, who, what's his last, Val, um, Val Val Velfry, uh, who is a councilperson and also worked on the housing authority that sat on pad for a very long time. And who's been personally very supportive to me and very supportive to his community in our county around advocating for people um and, and that are dealing with homelessness. There's also um I just want to thank again our constituent and neighbor, Marissa Holberg, for her enthusiasm around the backyard habitat program and our shared enthusiasm that we are part of the service district now of that program. And noting that four hundred um backyards were certified and that they've been very innovative during the pandemic as well. And I know a lot of people now are out in their yards doing activities instead of some of the other ways that we used to gather. And I just want to put that out there for people to consider signing up for. Um. Yeah, I think that's going to be about it. I want to stand in solidarity with Mayor um Bubanix and the mayor's support of um against the events at the Capitol. This they're just kind of, it really kind of blows my mind. It's very difficult to even talk about and hard to get my head around. I've never seen anything like it. And so I really stand in solidarity with that letter. There's also other ways that people can individually write. And if anyone wants more information on that, feel free to reach out to me through my email at bbrooks@twelten.gov. Um, thank you. And thanks again. Um, congratulations to the new counselors. I'm looking forward. It's been a great first meeting and I'm looking forward to continuing these next, uh, this term with you guys.
Any other comments? Well, Bridgette did a nice segue here. I just want to close the night with, she mentioned the letter written by the mayors that comprise the metro mayor's consortium. Those are twenty-five mayors across the region. Uh, Washington County, Clackamas County also includes the mayor of Vancouver. So I'm just going to quickly read the letter. Uh, it's a letter uh on the insect, in the on, I can't talk, it's getting late, on the events of last week. The Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium strongly condemns the acts of domestic terrorism that occurred in Washington DC last week. This action has no place in American political discourse. There are those of us in the MMC who supported President Trump. There are those of us in the MMC who supported President-elect Biden. There are those of us in the MMC who supported other candidates for other offices. All that is history. We are united in dismay to see a ceremony of a peaceful change of administration for two hundred and forty years smeared by Wednesday's violence. As mayors, we have spent too much time and too much effort to improve the lives of our constituents to accept this as anything but what it was, a blatant disregard for the flag, the republic and the constitution. A similar action occurred in Salem at our state capitol and Mayor Wheeler was accosted during a recent dinner. It goes beyond the pale that we would countenance such aberrant behavior toward our public officials. It is proper that we air our grievances. That is what the first amendment is about. But that amendment does not condone trampling on the rights of others. The right to do the public's business is equally important. Average differences of opinion is a vital fabric of our republic. The attack of Mayor Wheeler, the absurd actions in Salem and the horror in Washington are not examples of free expression. Where they are actions that deserve condemnation and legal consequences. As we move beyond this, the MMC hopes that we can recover from this and redirect our moral compass. We cannot stand by and watch this. We need to participate in the reconstruction of our national dreams and we need to do so with intention and purpose. We ask everyone to join us in making this country once again, in the words of Abraham Lincoln, with mouths towards none, with clarity for all, with firmness in the right as God gives us the right. But as strive to finish the work we are in, to bind up the nation's wounds, to do all which may achieve and cherish a just and lasting peace among ourselves and with all nations. And that was the conclusion of the letter. Uh, anything else for the good of the order tonight? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion a second to adjourn tonight. I assume there's no uh comments or questions on the motions. Uh, Counsel Sacco?
Aye.
Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
Counsel Pratt?
Aye.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Thank you all for attending tonight. Congratulations to our new counselors. We'll see you again soon and have a very safe and pleasant evening. Happy New Year.